Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for coming out on this cold evening. And but we are glad that we're all here. And this is a call to order for the Wilmette Public Library District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. The time is now 6:30, and the meeting will begin. Secretary DiLorenzo, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Trustee Cox here. Trustee DiLorenzo here. Trustee Senate here. Trustee Fishman?
Here.
And Trustee Nealan O'Keefe. And Nealan, O'Keefe, Senate, and Summer are not present.
Senate is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Trustee Nealan, O'Keefe, and Summer are not absent.
Thank you, good. Our first order of business is review and approval of the draft minutes of the November 19th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the October 15, 2024.
Sorry, it should say November 19th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
November 19th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting as presented. I second.
Thank you. The motion has been brought forward by Trustee Senate and seconded by Trustee DiLorenzo. Is there any discussion? Any comments, corrections, additions? All right, seeing none, may we, excuse me. Secretary DiLorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. The motion to approve the minutes from November 19th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting as presented is approved. Thank you. Now is the time on our agenda for any public comment. Meeting trustees who have signed the visitor public comment registration form and who wish to address the board of trustees may do so here. If there are any comments, now is the time. Do we have a microphone? All right, then proceed. Thank you, then moving on. It's now for the Treasurers Report. Trustee Summer is not available, is not here tonight, but Trustee Cox will now deliver our Treasurer Report.
Yeah, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to Director Austin and Sandra for the detailed report, financial reports that were provided and for answering some questions along the way, and to Director Summer for her thorough review. Just a reminder that since we didn't meet in December, we're reviewing both the November and the December financial reports.
May I just make a correction? It's Trustee Summer. Yeah, thank you.
Did I say just Summer?
You said Director Summer, but Trustee Summer.
Trustee Summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so just a few key points that we wanted to bring to your attention. In terms of income from taxes, in November, we received approximately $116,000 in general fund property taxes and $128,934 in total taxes, which is reflected on the second profit and loss statement, all funds. And in December, we received $27,833 in general fund taxes. So any question about income tax? As noted in the notes to the financial statements for both months, interest income continues to be robust as we benefit from our CD investments. So again, as we've seen throughout all last year, the investment income has been really, really good. So we're very grateful for the careful attention to that. Sandra and Director Austin continue to evaluate the CDs and the maturity dates to ensure they are taking advantage of the best rates they can while monitoring the bond ladder. So thank you. Also, in the December Treasurers Report, we had three PMA CDs from the Special Reserve Fund mature in December, and all three were reinvested for 12 months. We discovered that one of our fifth third CDs in the Special Reserve Fund was called on December 30th. Generally, we do not invest in callable securities, but apparently one slipped through last year. We reinvested those funds in the new fifth third CD this month, and that will be reflected on the January CD report. There are two general fund CDs from fifth third maturing in January, and those will be reinvested as well. So, yeah, thank you. Very well. In terms of the computer project that we approved last year, in November and December, there were a number of checks to HP or QAP for the new computer project, which were properly classified in the Special Reserve Fund expenditures. Through December, we have spent a total of $211,370 of the total approved amount of So there's still some work to be done on that. Also in November, there was one check to Engberg Anderson in the amount of $6,365 for a total spending on the renovation project evaluation of $25,408, which is slightly more than the amount approved by the board of $25,000, which, if I remember, there were some small contingency expenses related to things like travel that we discussed that I think we had said would not be more than like $1,000, so that seems within what we had discussed at the beginning.
Right. I thought we had pushed it a little bit to $26,000? Or no? I don't recall. I thought it's something, but you're right, some of the, for the expenses.
Yeah, I remember a little bit of change. Discussion about like very small contingency expenses, and I think, yeah, like really it was going to be less than $1,000, and it seems to be well within that, so. In total, there was $67,190 in Special Reserve Fund dispersments in November. In December, there was one Special Reserve Fund expensing the amount of $110,000 for the computer project. And there was a check to PMA Services in the amount of $3,525 for Andrew Kim's Consulting Services related to his work on the levy and evaluating the construction projects. And finally, on the balance sheets each month, in the equity section, the current fund balance represents the net income for all classes from the year ending on 6/30/24, and this will be rolled over in the beginning fund balances as an adjustment before the next
Any questions for Trustee Cox? I think it's all sounds in keeping with our budget. Good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the bills and salaries? Oops, I'm sorry. Now on to bills and salaries. Anything, any questions, comments? Then is there a motion to approve the Bills and Salaries Check Detail for November and December 2024?
I move approval of the Bills and Salaries Check Detail for November and December 2024 as presented. Second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion from Trustee Cox to approve the Bills and Salaries Check Detail for November and December 2024, and Trustee Summer has seconded the motion. Secretary DiLorenzo, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DiLorenzo, yes. Trustee Senate, yes. And Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Well, we're moving along. We do not have any action items this evening, so we'll move on to Director Austin's report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to not try to fill the whole evening with my report. There is a lot to share about the activity for these past two months, but I will keep it to a top-level review, and then any questions that you have for me about operations, we can take up thereafter. The first thing I'll mention is last week, the library participated in the League of Women Voters Wilmette, long-running program for student government leaders. It's part of our eighth-grade civics program at District 39 at the junior high. And I was joined by Trustees Fishman and Cox for what has become my favorite event in the community. Sorry, other folks, that's, it kind of is. I love engaging with this eighth-grade group, and this year was certainly one of the most engaged groups that I think I've seen in the past six that I've been doing this. It was absolutely wonderful. I could go on and on about it, but I mean, do either of you want to share anything about your experience with this program?
Yeah, it was the second year I've done it, and I agree, it's just a very, they asked great questions. I think there was a little change this year in that the students were nominated, which I think added to their enthusiasm because they felt special and chosen, and they reflected very well in that. And it's also a great opportunity to interact with the other, like the Park District and the Village and those folks as well. So, yeah, good time had by all.
I was really taken by the enthusiasm of the students, and I didn't know that about the nomination process, but I have participated one other time, and there wasn't, there wasn't as much enthusiasm this time around, and they were very much engaged and wanted to know a lot about what we did and how we do it and how we are involved. And particularly, they were interested, we had in our group a, someone from, in my group, I should say, District 39. So they were very much engaged with some of their concerns about why they have to be doing square dancing, which they really didn't love very much, and the bathrooms and their dining hall, cafeteria, and so forth. So they really had personal issues, as well as we're looking at the big picture. So I really had a great time.
It's a really great program that basically prepares a class of eighth graders for preparing a mock student government program where they interview all of us as trustees and executive leaders of the local government bodies to learn more about the work that we do, how we make decisions, how partnerships are formed, what intergovernmental agreements look like, in an effort to try to replicate that and understand a little bit more about the nuances and the desyncrasies that go into that work. A really great program, and I'm grateful for District 39 and the League for continuing to represent that and help grow the next generation of government leaders in our community. So thank you for your participation.
I think there was a comment that said the League has been doing, holding this program for 50 years.
Fifty years.
So, it was great.
It's great.
One student asked how old you have to be to run for the library board, which I think is 18, right?
I don't know the answer to that question, actually, off the top of my head. It would be in the state elections packet would explain your, how old you have to be for candidacy. Okay, all right. Moving on to library business. So again, for my report, I'm covering data from November and December of '24. Just a quick review of some statistical highlights. We saw 21,000 visitors in November and just over 22,000 in December, and we had a couple closed days in there. We were now averaging over 800 users visiting us each day, which is on par with the traffic that we saw pre-pandemic. So we're certainly starting to see more people coming back to the library, and the energy in the building is certainly reflected by that. Part of this was due to the fact that the winter final seasons from the area high schools coincided with the end of our calendar year in December, and door traffic was significantly higher in December than it was in the previous five years, with some of the days seeing over 1,100 people coming in. When the students are here, they're generally highly engaged in the work that they're doing with their studies, but it is very clear that we do not have enough spaces for all the activity when we've got that many people in the building. This room is transformed into a study space with multiple tables and chairs, but beyond that, and all the other accommodations that we try to make around the building, any open aisle or places in the stacks are filled with students that are really engaged with their learning. So lots of activity going on with our schools at the end of the year. It was a, it was a big success. We welcomed some new members to the library in November, December. We had 128 new patrons in November and 116 joining us in December. Our physical circulation was performing really well and has been consistent with our performance in the past four years, so we're right on par. Our collections teams continued to make great progress on our physical collection management and made a number of shifts that allow for implementation of our presentation and display guidelines, which allow us to offer more in-shelving display of materials. So we're doing more face-outs in our collections with, as a result of some of this work. We're also making some of our more popular collections more available by trying to move some of our collections around. On the digital side of collections, in November, DMS Manager Lauren Kelly worked with Press Reader to add the New York Times as a new platform for us at no additional cost. If you're not familiar with Press Reader, I highly recommend taking a look at this product. It contains full image views, as though you're actually reading the newspaper in front of you, and the fact that we now have the Daily New York Times in there has been a huge boon for us. This full-image edition has the most recent three months worth of issues, and there's no usage limits, and our use of that product really went up markedly in November, or December, rather, according to Lauren's statistics. Canopy?
Excuse me, may I interrupt for a moment? So it's like people, you get the image or the view as if you were actually reading.
It's a full scan of the newspaper, yes.
As it is.
So that's the Times? A print, a text-only version, right? And that's in some of the other databases that we subscribe to. There are multiple newspapers from around the world that are in Press Reader, including a lot of local newspapers. So highly recommend checking out that resource. Another one that saw a lot of use at the end of the year was Canopy. Canopy is a streaming service that offers a ticket system for checking out movies. They've got a lot of, some of the Criterion films are in there, more arthouse films, documentaries, a lot of really great, great stuff. Our highest usage ever in a single month was in December of '24, and we had over 1,200 videos that were played that month. So if you haven't already checked out Canopy, I highly recommend it. We've even got a film club that is built around the use of that platform. The end of the year gave us an opportunity to reflect on our overdrive circulation, which has really been booming the last few years, and every month of 2024 saw more checkouts of eBooks, digital audiobooks, and digital magazines than the highest numbers of 2023. There was a 20% increase in checkout between '23 and '24, and there's no signs of that slowing down. Digital usage of our collections has gone up exponentially post-pandemic, and we're going to continue to see that trend. So we're going to continue to study that and what the impact of that is going to be on our selection trends as we move forward. Into the departments with some more updates. In adult services, in November, we were excited to welcome Rachel Rothie to the Adult Services Team as a part-time librarian. She comes from our Circulations Department, so we were happy to see her successfully transition to her new roles and responsibility. She is an advisory specialist, and she's working specifically with curating reader suggestions and is putting together personalized requests and postings on the website. So if you're looking for quality fiction, Rachel Rothie is another one of our staff members that can assist you. At the end of my report, you'll see there's an article that was authored by our librarian Suzanne Arist, who has served with the Illinois Library Association in a number of capacities, and this time she was published in the ILA Reporter. Her article, "You're Never Too Old for the Library: Senior Services at Three Illinois Public Libraries," was featured in the December 2024 issue of the ILA Reporter. Speaking of adult services, early December marked a notable change in the delivery of services from the Adult Services Department. On the public service floor, we offered a new service model. For many years, specialist reference and collection assistance was offered from twin access points. We had a reference desk and a recent arrivals desk in the most active sections of the first floor. With the opening of the studio late last year and the accompanying relocation of the public computers, the reference desk was recast to be a shared service point with digital and maker services this past year. And late in 2024, we made a transition to a new iteration, one in which the adult services staff and the functions were consolidated into a single desk that was rebranded as the Adult Services Desk in the place of where the former Reader's Assistance Desk, the recent arrivals desk, was. This change was not made lightly. There were a lot of decisions that were made to bring us to this point, and there are a number of challenges that are created with this location, but we're making adaptations, and we're working with this process as we move forward, and we'll continue to evaluate and see what we can do with our spaces as we evolve, particularly in this highly concentrated area with some of our more popular collections, as well as the adjacent location of the holds. There's a lot for us to evaluate about the usage of the space, but we're really excited to see the consolidation of our adult services team in that location.
Excuse me, will there be, is there signage where people might have gone, known to go in the past, so is there, I haven't noticed? Sorry about that. But is there signage directing them, or there's always someone at that desk?
That's right. So the recent arrivals desk is the adult services desk, the former reference technology desk is the technology desk. There is signage on each desk, and there are staff that are stationed at each of those locations, and we're always looking to triage folks that it might be lost and help them find the services that they're looking for. All right. An update about our reading program. Winter is a really busy time for us, and building on the success of our inaugural Wilmette Reads initiative from early 2024, we wanted to merge the traditional community reading program with our adult and teen winter reading, which we did last year, and we were excited to do some new enhancements to that program this year. And one of the changes that we enhanced for Wilmette Reads 2025 was we launched it a little early, before everyone went on winter break, so they could get a little bit of a start. On December 15th, we started with an announcement launching this program in the vestibule with a meet and greet, and that provided a pop-up opportunity for us to launch the lobby display, as well as to promote the materials that we have for this program. So there are two titles, a fiction and nonfiction title for our series this year. "Entangled Life: How Fungi Make Our Worlds, Change Our Minds, and Shape Our Futures" by Merlin Sheldrake is the nonfiction title, and "Ghost Music" by Anne Yu is the work of fiction. And these works were selected in conversation with each other, as well as to spark dialogue about the interconnectedness, be it among community, the natural world, or our shared human experiences. An early response from our patrons has been invigorating, and the quirk factor of choosing a motif of mushrooms seemed to have made an initial impression with folks beyond what we could have expected. We recognize that there's a trend towards cottage core, and this is kind of a reference to that, and folks are really jazzed about picking up the swag that's attendant to it. We've got some, we've gamified a little bit of the participation in the program. We've got the signup prizes of getting a tote bag, which is the library super-user bag, thank you. And there's buttons for various programs and milestone achievements that you have along the way with the program. And then, once you've completed the program, we've got, for the first time, an enamel pin that we're offering for folks. So definitely finish up the program and get that exciting, collectible enamel pin.
Could I just hold up something else? Is that a Wilmette Reads is a little flyer that then helps you, gives you ideas of what you might be interested to do, and then shows you your progress along the way, working towards that enamel pin?
So definitely check out the website, learn more. We are sort of midway through the program right now. It goes through February 15th, so still plenty of time to register and participate.
May I also make another comment? We have the time. And I participated in two programs, one that was Mushroom Cookery, and it was a webinar Zoom program, and it was great. It was fun. They had the recipes that you received ahead of time. Not that you were going to cook along with them, you could have, but that was nice. And then this room was turned into a watercolor do-it-yourself kind of program, and very well-attended, and a lot of fun. And I have no talent for painting, but I tried, and it looks nothing like the nice mushrooms on the program here, the log, but it's fun. And it was, a lot of people, I sat next to a woman, turns out she's lived in Wilmette for 60 years, and as Jennifer Bartel mentioned, it really does help to build community. So I really applaud the staff, and I'm a big fan of the program.
I did the book discussion, I think it was last Saturday, on Ghost Music, which was really well-attended and led by an outside facilitator, which I think was fun and just something a little different. It was a writer, so he used it more as like a working exercise, and then I've signed up for the virtual mushroom identification session tomorrow night. So I, again, kudos, the theme is really fun, I think, and just lots of creativity. I can tell lots of creativity has gone into all of the activities, and I absolutely have bought into it because, you know, I've attended, I think. So, yeah, thanks to the staff for their really creative use of the theme.
Awesome. Thanks for participating. Running concurrent with our Wilmette Reads program for adult and teens is our annual Winter Reading Club for Kids, and we invite kids of all ages to track their reading again through February 15th to earn a prize book, and there's a reading log for kids as well. You can find that information on our website, and we just encourage everyone to participate. We thank the sponsorship of Wilmette Reads, and the Winter Reading Club is generously supported by the Friends of the Wilmette Public Library. Thank you, friends. All right, a couple more things I want to share. Outreach, lots of outreach activity at the end of the calendar year. And after several months of conversation and planning with a newly structured partnership with the Women's Club of Wilmette, Assistant Adult Services Manager Rachel Garcia was the featured presenter at their November 14th event. And on November 20th, John Amundson was invited to speak at the final Business for Breakfast Networking Event, which had 50 attendees, and was a partner program with all five of the communities, with the two chambers representing Nutria Township, basically Wilmette, Kenaworth, Winnetka, Northfield, and Glenco. So great engagement with adult services. Youth Services did extraordinary outreach engagement at the end of the year as well, hosting just over 30 events and with, you know, 2,700 people being reached with the outreach that they did with their program. Specifically, in Youth Services, for the first time, we, our school engagement librarian, Etty Berland, coordinated and hosted December school visits to promote the Winter Reading Clubs, and she presented to over 2,000 students and teachers and shared with the students how they can participate in our programs in a way that was fun, engaging, and informative. Our preschool outreach librarian, Ruth Bell, arranged 14 deliveries of picture books and learning materials to our partner preschools. And we also had a very, another inaugural event here at the library. District 39 Junior High and High Crest Middle School held their staff meetings at the library. So for the first time in partnership with Youth Services, District 39's Assistant Superintendent for Technology and Safety, who oversees the school media, the curriculum for the libraries, hosted their teacher-staff meetings at the library, and our staff contributed some library information sessions as well at those meetings. So in this space, Youth Services Manager Andrea Johnson, School Engagement Librarian Etty Berland, Community Engagement Librarian Sarah Joza-Harako, and Youth Services Librarian Jennifer Lee shared engaging, information-rich presentations about the resources that are available to teachers and their students and families, and shared survey feedback that they had received from teachers. And Ruth Bell also offered tours to those who were interested and also assisted with hosting our program, and we had over 80 teachers that attended that training. And we want to thank our partners at St. John's Church across the street for accommodating additional parking for all of those that came to those programs. Youth Services did a lot of programs at the end of the year as well. In November, they offered 63 events that were both staff-led and self-directed that were a that were attended by twenty-three hundred-plus patrons, and in December, offered forty-two programs, which helped to reach seventeen hundred patrons. And we offered self-directed activities at the Hibbert Park Story Walk, our Winter Reading Club Scavenger Hunt, as well as a bulletin board activity called The Gratitude Tree that you can see in our report this month. Other programming, our big program to end the year is our annual New Year's Eve concert, which was a huge success. We had a hundred and ten patrons that participated here in a full auditorium, as well as some overflow seating that went out to the elevator. And we hosted Willmet resident and local favorite trumpeter Bobby Lewis, who led a trio with Andy Brown on guitar and Stuart Miller on bass. Always a popular program for us. The Communication and Events Team completed and delivered the January-through-March Winter Twenty Twenty-Five newsletter, which is part of the communications packet that's circulating around here. You can see a whole host of programs that we're offering. It is one of two sixteen-page newsletters that we offer each year, and it's jam-packed with all kinds of programs, services, and events. We also ended the year with a, an email wrapping up some of the fun information that we have to share about what happened over the course of the last year as part of an annual report. Sort of a new highlight reel for us. We were changing up the way that we report our annual reporting, so we're going to do this in two ways. We're going to do this kind of fun review of the programs, services, and highlights of the year, along with the top reads and most-used items by our community, and that's basically what everyone received in their email. We also have more of a business-oriented annual report that we want to deliver to you, and we're going to do that by the end of this month. And that has more statistical data, like what would be reported in the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, as well as more financial information. Because that information is typically centered around the fiscal year, and our fiscal year runs from July to June, this will be the last time that we deliver this type of data in an annual report form in January. And this, coming up in just a couple of months, we'll be done with fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and we will compile all of that information concurrent with the annual financial report that is done with our auditor sometime in the summer. And early fall, we'll deliver that, once all that data is finalized. So you'll get the most recent statistical data sooner than having to wait till January for that annual report. So expect that sometime in early fall in twenty-five. A couple other points I want to share with you. Trustee Cox was alluding earlier to some end-of-year spending in the Special Reserve Fund for our computer replacement project. We did complete the computer placement, replacement of the public computers in December, and so that includes all of our internet stations, as well as the catalog stations. And so those were all implemented first in December, and the staff computers are due to be delivered here next week. Everything is already imaged and on-site. The deployment is what we're still waiting for. We deployed new training to staff as well. We're getting new software, a new cloud-based Office productivity suite called Microsoft three sixty-five, which includes elements of the Office twenty twenty-four software. It's a new, a new platform for us primarily. It provides us with the opportunity to have more collaboration and more effective communication by bringing all of our documents into the cloud, where we can more readily share and participate together on those tools. It also creates more opportunities for us to engage with our Teams software that we've been using for the last couple of years. So to help introduce this, this training initiative to our, our staff, the Digital Maker Services Team of Linnea Lundberg and Lauren Kelly put together a forty-minute training video to orient the staff to all these new tools and what they can expect from them. And we just launched that minutes ago for all staff, and they'll be participating in that video training over the course of the next couple of weeks. And then we're going to offer in-person training for staff as well, so that they can make the most of the new resources that they have. Once the computers are physically installed next week, we will have our final payment to CVI for the implementation, and that's the remaining piece of the Special Reserve Fund that we were talking about earlier. The other activity, I guess I wanted to share from my report in terms of the building, is the fireplace. You may have noticed that we've made an update to the fireplace. The fireplace was turned off in spring of twenty-four, after we discovered that there were some issues with the maintenance of some of the piping for that system. So we conducted an evaluation of that system, and we learned that it was deteriorating and it needed to be updated and replaced. We were concurrently talking at the time about an interior renovation project that may or may not have included some activity related to that fireplace, so we kind of deferred some of the work on that. As it became clear late in the year that we weren't going to be proceeding with the renovation project, we turned our attention back to the hearth, where everyone likes to gather, and we wanted to provide a nice, warm space there for folks. However, we also recognized, in calling back upon some of our community members' concerns about the gas nature of that fireplace, that it uses natural gas, is a fossil fuel, we want to be committed to our sustainability initiatives. We invested in a solution that would be electric-based, but also produce heat. And we found a solution that kind of meets our expectations for the time being, and maybe we'll grow upon it a little bit as we proceed, but it seems to be serviceable, and people are able to still gather by it, and it's still kind of cozy. The piece that remains unaddressed, though, from this project is the fact that the tuck pointing inside of the fireplace is deteriorating, and we'll need some updating and replacement if we should choose to use the fireplace with an actual live flame in the future. Those are kind of the key highlights that I wanted to share from my report. Are there any questions of any other detail that you have from my report?
Looks like the cleaning contract, Director Austin, will be pre-bid or potentially changed?
Yes. So Marcos is in the process of conducting an analysis of available vendors for us. We've been with our current vendor for some time, and it's time for us to change up that service. So we're in the process of reviewing applications from some qualified vendors, and we'll make a recommendation to you all, likely at the February meeting. And with your endorsement of that, we'll be able to initiate that contract in March.
Do we have any idea at this point, will it be cost-neutral, or is that?
I'm going to say, at this point, looking at it, it's probably going to be cost-neutral. I don't know that we're going to achieve savings. However, we're going to try to elevate the level of service that we're providing. So the same expectations, but with a different vendor will hopefully yield better results for about the same cost.
Would it be worthwhile to look into what other municipal entities, what other contracts and groups that they use, maybe an economy of scale, or if they've been satisfied with the service?
We would still need to have our own specific vendor, but we have consulted with our peers. So we've done, we've done an environmental scan.
Okay, good.
Yep. And we'll share more with you about our study as we get into that process next month.
One last question about the fireplace. Since it sounds like the electric version is working well, you can, I understand you can have a fan that blows heat, and that adds, in the winter months, tonight, coziness. Why would we even need to rebuild the inside, the tuck pointing? If we now are satisfied with this?
We'll have to analyze the structural integrity of it to see how degraded it is, but just as we did a comprehensive tuck pointing of the exterior of the building a few years back, all things tend to wear over time. And that fireplace was never inspected inside until we conducted that study earlier this past year, so. I have not put eyes on it. I'm not aware of the level of deterioration. We want to make sure it's safe. I don't think it's crumbling like that, but at this point, it's, it's undetermined if the sustained use and production of heat in that space is going to contribute to further deterioration. So we'll analyze it as part of our capital study. Are there other questions from my report?
I, I saw from the, the counts of the programs that, let me see what I'm talking about. The counts were impressive by, well, I circled one, the Life and Songs of Woody Guthrie. Had a hundred people. That's impressive. But the Diwali Celebration had two hundred. How fabulous that was. And we have another one. We have something exciting coming up also, if I recall, of international, well, I'm sorry. Okay, I shouldn't have brought that up.
Is it due here on Saturday?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
This coming Saturday, the twenty-fifth. Yep.
Should be great. In this room, in the auditorium. I take it? Yeah, great.
It's a partnership with the school district. Very well-attended, and.
What are the hours on that? If you could remind us?
Four. Okay. Lunar New Year celebration.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good, right update. Well, there were two months worth that we had a lot going on. Thank you. Committee report, I L A and Rails. Trustee Nealon is not here, but Director Austin?
Yeah, I can provide a brief update. So the big news out of I L A right now is that the Illinois Library Association has acquired Illinois Libraries Presents. That's I L P. I L P is responsible for presenting a lot of author programming and partnerships with some big-name celebrities. It was originally created by Northbrook Public Library in participation with a number of peer libraries in the area, and the Illinois Library Association has negotiated with Northbrook to take it over and extend it as an opportunity to all libraries throughout the state. They're going to honor the same pricing structure that they have for that right now, and the same leadership model, and then they're going to have a period of transition where they will evolve that program. But we're really excited for what this means. It validates the work that's been done by the I L P group, and it extends this opportunity to other libraries in the state, so we're excited about that news. That's sort of the big thing out of I L A, and I don't have anything to share about Rails at the moment, unless anyone else has anything to add. Okay.
Excellent. Great. And the Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee update? Well, there's a meeting tomorrow night, and I'll be attending along with Trustee Senate. Thank you so much. And we'll be giving a report on the, remind me, the.
Decennial Local Government Efficiency.
Hello, great. And, and then also talking about the next steps for the village-wide mental health project. We'll have a report for you next month. Thank you. We have our purple folder going around with communication and notes from our suggestion box. And moving on, any new business? All right, seeing you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you. Trustee DeLorenzo, and the time is now seven thirteen. All those in favor can just signify by raising our hands and saying. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Oh, I want to say.
Huge.